Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our council budget meeting for Monday, March 10th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you'd take your roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Show her absent for now and excused.
Councilmember Witt.
Same thing with Councilmember Witt.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dole.
Show Councilmember Dole as absent and excused.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of four.
Okay, thank you. All right, tonight we got some items for consideration, starting with our '25-'26 budget department presentations. I'm going to start with the introduction and I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is that time of year where we're doing the budget and each department comes in to present essentially what they've done throughout the year, but also their budget for next year and their plans, given the amounts that we're settling on. It's been, with each department, as you see, tonight you're being presented with sort of the beginning of the draft of the budget. Each department, and I and the treasurer have met, gone through the what's possible, given our current financial circumstances, and what they can deliver next year in a fiscally responsible manner that allows them to give the best service that we possibly can. So as they come up tonight, understand that no budget is set until it's fully presented to council, and council's given an opportunity to vote on that, of course, but with each department, you know, any changes to what you're seeing right now will be small comparatively, unless council provides additional direction that would change that, what's being presented. So, but first I wanted to give an introduction. I think it's important, especially when we start discussing all the departments, really that's the meat and potatoes of drafting a budget. It's where the rubber meets the road. It's where the departments take the tax dollars and perform the services for the community. And it's important to put that in context, you know. So tonight, we'll be discussing the police department, the fire department, mayor, council, city manager, and personnel departments, general government services, which is like a catch-all, the boards and commissions budget, cable communications in the 21st District Court. While the 21st District Court is its own independent agency essentially, they are funded through taxpayer dollars in the city of Garden City, partially through the state, but largely through the city. So they present a budget as it impacts ours. A little bit of jumping around, though, I am doing my PowerPoint, and for the sake and for the benefit of the communications department, I'm just going to do mayor, council, city manager, general government services, and board and commissions at the end of my presentation right now, because I was covering those tonight, and just for brevity and a little ease on the PowerPoint here. So, just to put everything in context again, you know, this year's budget is based on what was left with us last year. So this is our, you know, what we did last year and the way that now impacts our decision-making. As discussed at the first budget meeting, you know, the deficit we are, that is currently structured for the city is not sustainable. We need to make adjustments. And you will see those adjustments throughout each department tonight. I know there's been a lot of focus on Parks and Rec, but what you'll actually see is every department's taking significant reductions. And really, when it comes to Garden City's budget, the big driver of costs and where you can really only move the needle to save millions of dollars is in staffing. So across all departments, you'll see reductions in staffing. Those that have more than one person or two people that perform the job, almost all of them have some form, whether it's through part-time, whether it's through full-time. We are fortunate right now to be in a position where we have a significant amount of vacant positions throughout some of our bigger departments that we can take advantage of and not fill, so we don't have to act and do as many actual people's jobs reductions, but really mostly, mostly what we're just addressing is not filling those vacant positions in order to create that savings, to get ourselves back to a more reasonable and balanced budget. You know, of course, we will continue to be creative and find revenues and develop plans to further the city, but at this point, we've got to get to a balanced budget so that we can go back to growing in a sustainable method, a sustainable measure. And just adding to that perspective, the city of Garden City receives approximately $11 million in general operating revenue and about $2 million from public safety millage. That accounts, as far as our budget's concerned, really, once you get that money in and pay it out, the combined cost of the police and fire department at around $13 million. So really, what's left to operate the city is mostly state shared revenue, which is just shy of $4 million. We've got Act 51 money and assessments each and revenues each department generates, and it's really where we're funded from. So a large chunk of it, of that tax bill you pay, is going to go towards public safety, which, you know, I know is a priority for our citizens, and it does, but then what's left over, it's just not a ton to work with. So when we're growing our city services, we need to be mindful of how long that's sustainable and why is that? You know, I don't think you can discuss municipal budgeting in Michigan without talking about, especially for a city, Garden City size, who we don't have any big farms where they're building houses on, we don't have any additional growth that's coming. We're kind of set as we are. Certainly, we can use community development to best utilize our land and develop with what we have, and it's important, but to realize that ultimately, the city of Garden City is funded with a lot less than it was prior to 2008, when the Great Recession hit. And it's just important to understand, that's the context in which we make decisions. In 2008 and '09, the state equalized taxable value of Garden City was $885 million roughly. We were able to tax $726 million of that. After the Great Recession, property values dropped down to where we were funding the city in '13 with under $500,000 of what we could tax, because the city's taxable value was only at $508,000, I mean, the state equalized value. Realize the state equalized value is what the state values your home at, and the taxable value is of it which we can tax. So if you have $100,000 of state equalized value and we can tax $70,000 of it, then that's our taxable value. So it's kind of similar in that respect to the sheet here. So you'll see that we dropped down significantly, but as property values have returned, and in fact, Garden City has a state equalized value now of over $1 billion, yet we can't tax more than we could in 2008 or 2009. So it means the operating money we get is still limited and actually lower than that which we were able to get in 2008. And what's the impact of that when you tax the exact same amount of dollars, expecting the exact same amount of services as 2008, is it really looks more like this when you factor in inflation? You know, if you put today's dollars into what they used to be able to tax in 2008, Garden City was in the same, using inflation, was at about, about $1 billion, $1 billion two in state equalized taxable value, if you calculate into today's value. And we were able to tax over $1 billion of that, meaning there was taxes that we could get beyond what we could today. Today, we're capped at roughly the same amount of money, but things just cost more. There are 20 years' worth of increased costs. So we're continuing to operate, and we're continuing to operate very well, but it's important to understand that, you know, though, no tax bill is one anyone wants to pay or thinks is low enough. The reality is, propay and headly, which is great for homeowners, great for people who live in their house for a long time, and we want them to continue to do so, but there is a reality that we have to deliver services where costs are exceeding what our tax values can grow, or what's our taxable value can grow. So it's just, it's important to understand that context, because then it puts us in the situation of this, you have to prioritize. That's our big question this year. The hard part of this process, especially in a state with limited ability for council to go out and raise revenue, is to deal with ever-increasing expectations and limited resources. How much do we pay for public safety? How much do we spend on public works, parks and rec? What about those necessary support services? You've got to have finance, you've got to have community development, you've got to raise the value of these properties for people, because you're tasked with that. I see my job as the city manager is to provide excellent city services and to do the best I can to increase the quality of life and property value of Garden City citizens. So how do we do that with the limited funds we have? And I'll say, we've been tremendous at doing it for a very long time, and I anticipate we will continue to do so. However, we did, over the last few years, increase costs quite a bit and increase level of services in some areas beyond what I think is sustainable. So you'll see throughout the next two budget meetings that the departments present, we're reducing those costs at a pretty good clip. To try and get us as close to a balanced budget with no real major dependence on the general fund next year, that will require some hard decisions, and we're making them as what I'm presenting, but ultimately, it's council's determination to decide these questions. How much do we spend on public safety? How much do we spend on public works? How much do we spend on parks and rec? I'm going to put those ideas forward to what I think is a sustainable model. It's represented in each department's presentation, but ultimately, council has to tell me if I'm on the right track or not. So as we speak tonight, feel free to interject any input after their presentation, and I'm open, of course, throughout the next month, as we go through this process, in, you know, further developing it to council's wishes. As I stated in the beginning at the first budget meeting, I think overall, our philosophy is to create a long-term plan, to create service and financial stability by doing the following. We go back to the principles that got us through the Great Recession. We dedicate funds to maintain and approve existing services. We focus on those existings and not to try and grow past what we can afford. We lower long-term costs with our expenses when we get capital money. We lower long-term costs. This year won't be much of a capital year, but as that comes forward in the future, we need to ask that simple question, is, does this capital purchase help us sustain what we have and lower those costs? If it checks those two boxes, it's something we should probably do. If it creates new costs, it's probably something we might want to consider not. We need to size back, resize our operations back to what our ability is to fund based on demand and the value our citizens expect. Specifically, I'm recommending that we, as you'll see in each budget presentation, immediately reduce expenditures this year, which we have, but particularly now we're talking about next year, and similar to budgeting prior to 2020. We plan for our future revenues to go towards lowering costs, such as legacy costs, and again, we talk, we look at those capital project ideas with a new standard for approval. And that's really my introduction. That's where we're heading. That's what you'll start to see over the course of the next two, this meeting and the next. By the end of the next meeting, I'll be able to present a budget to you that puts all the departments together. But how you're looking at them tonight is essentially you're having one-pagers that say, hey, this is the police department's revenues, this is their expenditures, this is their bottom line cost for police, and this is the direction we're heading. Before I go a little further, though, like when you look at the police, there's some things I shifted. There's revenues and some expenses that were located in other parts of the budget. My goal is to really put as much as I can into each department's budget to represent their true cost. So we're tasers or body cameras and flock cameras might have been in a different part of the budget. I've moved it into the budget, and then also, I looked at overtime costs. They were, they were budgeted a lot lower than what they should have been, so I've increased those. So while I made a significant, the chief and I are making a significant amount of cuts to the cost of the police department, I took parts of the other budget and put it into their budget, so it may seem like an increase, but ultimately, there's a decrease in cost. It's just I reallocated things to be more representative of, this is what the police department costs you, this is what the fire department costs you. With that said, I'll just go on to the parts of the budget that I'm going to cover tonight. The first is the general government services fund. This is like a catch-all. There are parts of our operations that are captured in the general government services that really the entire city benefits from, you know, all of the departments, and that's where these are located. For example, Maplewood really doesn't have a specific home in a budget, so it's placed in the general government services fund, so their rent is recognized, but then I made sure we moved over their utilities and their cost over to the general government services fund, so we can identify Maplewood costs and that building and that operation in general government services, not parks and rec. I don't want them to bear the burden of managing that, as it's really become more just a city building we're looking to address and to isolate that into this budget. Also, the auditing line item, 101-265-801-100, that's to pay for Plant Moran to audit our financial position each year. Again, that's a service that the entire, every department is part of, so I can't put it in one department or the other versus, so instead, I put it in the general services. That's where it has been, so I see a good reason to keep it there. And then self-insurance hospitalization. You'll notice a dramatic decrease in that is because there's only part of that, it represents an account that pays for any contractually obligated health cost that is beyond our insurance coverage, so if there's a, there's a cost we've agreed in a contract to pay in a gap, we would cover it out of that account. I've taken, we're taking those accounts, if, let's say it's a cost for the police department, it's now been moved into the police department. And so in general government services, really, all we're paying is the administrative fees to operate that. It's through EHIM, it's our gap coverage, so that, that cost will be represented there, which is a lot less than what it was before, because those costs are spread amongst the department, again, to recognize true cost of each service. That's general government services. The next is mayor council fund and the boards and commissions funds. There's two funds, but I'm going to talk about them together, because they're both related. They're essentially the elected and appointed members of our city and their budgets. So first, we'll start with the mayor and council fund. Really, that's the only one, we'll talk specifically about both, just kind of about the costs they are, but mayor and council's fund is a, it contains legal service and court cases, which is really the city's attorney cost. So the city's attorney cost to prosecute ordinances as the prosecutor in our court for our city, to represent us in court in criminal cases, represent us in civil cases, and to provide council advice. So between those two accounts, which is 101, 101, 801, 2, and 300, they pay for this, the council's attorney, because ultimately, the city attorney is the city council's attorney. And so it's contained in your budget, but really, it's a, it's a service that benefits the entirety of the city, because it prosecutes the ordinances with the police department, reviews warrant requests with the police department, answers liability or other types of questions that come up during the course of operations, but ultimately, his responsibility is to counsel, so it's contained in that, but it's really not anything council decides other than, this is our attorney, and we have to recognize their legal fees when you're a municipality. The other is meetings, conferences, and workshops. This pays for our activities, including having these meetings, having workshops, but it also includes training for council and events to go to that, you know, has paid off for us in the past, council members going to these things, they get educated on a particular topic, they bring back grant information, sometimes grant opportunities, and it has a good value. You know, even when we're cutting budget, we still need to look to make connections throughout the region and the country to advance the city, because we don't want to miss the opportunities. That's a cost, too, when we miss grant opportunities, good ideas and funding opportunities. So those are the...
I have a question about that, about our budget.
Yes.
So I'm glad you mentioned that about the court cost being in the council budget.
Yes.
The other thing is recognitions, and it says that so far, we've spent $1,700, but it's projected for $23,000. Can you explain what that is? Because I know people ask about that all the time.
So recognition, and actually, as it turned, as you've highlighted there with the $23,000, I believe that will be greatly reduced. That is one of those little catchalls that I think was a symptom of the other, of a previous administration, a lot more recognition and events and things, but I believe we'll be reducing that closer to the $1,700. But it was for...
I mean, like when we recognize people at a meeting and stuff, right?
Yes, recognize meetings and...
Not $23,000 worth, though.
Yes, and but I also, events like volunteer dinners and things like that can come out of there. So ultimately, I do see that that is one being greatly reduced in the next budget. I think it's projected right now at the $23,000, but as I said, this isn't final. Some of these will be even more reduced or increased in places where it would be appropriate, but that is one where those recognitions come from.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And, let's see. Oh, lastly, city administration and management personnel. So really, city administration and HR is two people, myself and the HR director. There's two employees in both of these accounts, one for personnel and one, myself, in the management account. I feel like we operate pretty low-cost. It's just me and the HR director. We are both our secretaries and administrative assistants for each other and, you know, get by without a little, without much fluff. But there are some accounts in there that are just the cost of doing business. One is arbitration cases. That is where our employment attorney is paid out of. So it's not just, we're in arbitration for, because, you know, we have union employees and union things, which can take us to mandatory binding arbitration, which is a cost, but but also just the, it's, the employment attorney is paid out of that account, so it could probably have a little line that says slash employment attorney, but at the same time, we know what it's from, and that's why I'm explaining it tonight. There is a cost, you want to make sure you have an attorney available for council unemployment issues and an expert, because that's one of the higher liabilities a city has, so we want to make sure we're doing it right. The other personnel-related is actually in the boards and commission account, but it's really more of an HR, civil service commission. We have public safety officers who are, we are civil service commission city, or civil service city. Therefore, the promotion and hiring of police and firemen is prescribed by law under the Civil Service Act, so we have to test in a certain way, we have to do things in a certain way. So the civil service commission really essentially conducts all of those testings based on their authority and their approved testing methods. So that's where the tests are paid for. So if we have a police sergeant test, it'll get paid out for out of the civil service commission account. So it even caused me, when I first looked at the budget, I'm like, why would civil service cost more? It's because all those testings come out of there. So I think that's going to be it for those city services and the parts that I'm covering tonight. Next up will be the police department, but I'm open to any question on any of these accounts or even on my introduction to council.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Gibbons? Council? Okay, I will say...
I do have one, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember King.
And the general government services, I see a transfer to Radcliffe Fund, $1,500, approximately. Do you know what that's for?
That was from '23-'24, before I was here, but, you know, I believe that was, it was a transfer to capital project and transfer to Radcliffe Fund, so it was just an accounting of, again, this is a catch-all account, so I'm, you know, I can't speak to whether it was grant-funded or part of the city's contribution that was required by ARPA, but yeah, those all should have gone to Radcliffe, or I know some of the ARPA money was utilized, some of the early ARPA money was utilized to do some building improvements across the city, so I'm going to guess that was from there. But as you could see, that was zeroed out in the following years, as that money's no longer available, so. But I can actually give you a little fuller answer on that with a little bit of research this week.
Sure, no problem. Thanks.
Yeah, it's 1.5.
1.5 million, yeah.
Yeah, 1.5 million, not 1,500.
I missed a couple zeros.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, before we move on, I will say this to the public, that at the end of all these presentations, you will have an opportunity to make some comments of your own. We're just not going to do it individually as we go along, we're going to kind of move it along. So up next will be the police department with Chief Bob Aronaski.
Did you take the right one or go forward? If you want to go back, you can. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me up here tonight. I look forward to putting on this presentation and getting you guys up to date on our budget. As you know, it's the police department. I got sworn in as the police chief basically July 2024, so this will be my first budget that I get to go through with you guys today. What we've accomplished so far this year, we've been able to place four officers through the Wayne County Regional Police Academy. The nice thing about these four officers is they've all had some sort of reimbursement from the state. So the state currently is reimbursing us for employees that we send through the academy to get certified. The last one is between $20,000, $24,000 that they've been giving us. That goes back into one of our reimbursement funds for them, so some of their costs is offset, which is a nice thing. We also completed the update to the HVAC system over at the PD. If you remember, we started that, I believe, in 2023. We just finally got completed with the tech aspect, I guess I'll call it, so that they can now control it from off-site. They don't have to come in when we call with an issue and stuff like that. That was one of those overages that the chief, that the city manager talked about. Because it was a 2023 event, but we closed it out in 2024, the department still got charged on one of the accounts, so there's an overage of like $63,000 for that final payment that went into this year's budget. That wasn't expected, so I'll point that out for you. We also, as a department, answered 1,9,012 calls for service. That averages out to 52 calls per day, and the ordinance department performed 2,870 ordinance enforcement actions, which is about eight per day. So that's what we've accomplished so far this budget year. As you can see, our crime stats were pretty much staying static, which is a good thing. We've actually decreased a little bit. 2018, 2019 is when we started to increase our number of officers. We started to build back up. 2020, we kind of got hit with COVID, so we don't necessarily use those numbers, but you can see where that's where we started to really kind of come down from 2018, '19. We started to have an effect of having more officers on the road. Somebody once told me, for every officer you have, you knock off like 3% from your crime stats and stuff like that. I didn't look it up, I didn't confirm it, it's just what they told me, passing it on, because as you can see, if you take it at face value, we pretty much, we got one little blip, but we keep decreasing our crime stats, so. How are we funded? City manager's touched on this, but we'll just review it one more time. So the Garden City Police Department is funded from the general tax revenue and the public safety millage. The public safety millage is obviously divided between us and the fire department. It roughly gives us about 10%, 11% of our police budget, which is about $1.1 to $1.3 million. Really, I got on that slide. So the anticipated total appropriations that are going to be needed to operate the Garden City Police Department this year, this fiscal year 2025, is 9,784,000, excuse me, $9,784,370. I wish it was 9,000. In fiscal year 2024, we're going to come in at right around $9,290,221. This, we're trying to decrease our expenditures, we really are. Some of this is occurring because we're going to make a full MERS payment this year. Last year, I guess we only made half a MERS payment, so they were able to take some money around. The other thing that comes up, obviously, every year is going to be contractual raises. Those are increases that are contractually guaranteed. They're going to always push up our budget a little bit, and then, as I pointed out earlier, some stuff was left out of last year's budget that's going into this year's budget. So like that final payment for the HVAC, that's now in this year's budget. We had the flock cameras. The way the contract was structured, we weren't going to pay until they were actually completed. They got completed, done a little bit early, so they got put into this budget, but they weren't included in this budget. So that's added in there, too. That's another roughly $78,000, I believe, that got added into this year's budget that wasn't accounted for from the previous budget. So it's little increases like that that's bumped us up also. Total cost of police department is anticipated to be offset by about $833,000 in revenues from various sources. Primarily, we have officers that are grant-funded, and we get reimbursements from them. Some of those are the auto theft, which is the SMAC Southeast Michigan, I never remember this one, auto consortium, for lack of a better word there? I wrote it down, but it just always, that one always gets me. I don't know why SMAC gets me, but it gets me each and every time. We also reimburse for the school resource officers from the school preliminary. There's a rumor going around that they may want us to go year-round and provide an officer for the Cambridge Center during the summer times. Hasn't gone any farther than rumors, but if it does, that'd be another, some more revenue that would be generated from that. And we also use our forfeiture revenue when it's needed. We'll be using it for this year's budget. And then we also receive money from the state for the 911 surcharge, help us pay for the And here we go. Cost reductions at the police department. Pretty much, it's like you've heard for years, if you need to reduce costs, you need to reduce personnel. So that's pretty much what we're doing. We found one creative way to do things, which is, we have a federal forfeiture fund, where when we use seizures and forfeitures from one of our TFOs, task force officers, it goes into a separate forfeiture fund. There's certain things that you can take that money out and use it for. We had a rainy day fund. We had a big plan from the previous chief, who, our idea for that fund was to use it to fund police officers. We didn't plan on having to do it so early. We wanted to let it grow until it was self-funding, so that we could just take the money out, but it would never get lower than the interest, so that we could continue to fund them. Unfortunately, with the situation that we're at today, we're not going to be able to wait to do that, so we're going to pull it out a little bit early. We're going to take about $113,000 each year, as long as we can sustain that amount of money in order to cover some things, such as the flock cameras that I talked about earlier, the Axon contracts, those reoccurring costs that we can take out from there to After that, though, we get right into staffing. So we are going to reduce our staffing by five full-time employees. It's basically going to be, we have four budgeted spots... It's basically going to be, we have four budgeted spots that are vacant. Those are going to be gone. That'll be three police officers, the animal patrol officer, and then we have two part-time ordinance positions that we also get away, get rid of in order to make the five. We'll also try to reorganize our staffing to reduce overtime in the Patrol Division. And we're looking at different creative ways that we can still maintain our number levels, but not necessarily have as much overtime. That was one thing that we got a lot of overtime, because we don't have as many employees as we used to. So we're trying to work around that. And here's some revenue accounts. Just wanted to talk about them real quick. I'm not going to give the numbers, because I will probably mess them up. But basically, we have the reimbursements account, and this is an account that we just used to put what I was talking about, the Southeast Michigan Auto Crimes Consortium, AKA SMAC. We get reimbursed for that officer. We'll put it into this account here. Some other things we get reimbursed for, as I mentioned it earlier, too, was the police officers we send to the academy. When we get the grant reimbursement, it goes in here. So it's that type of fund, just from when our reimbursements come in, it gives us a place to put them. Next up is we have a, as you know, a rental and vacant properties employee who goes around and makes sure people are up to date on the rentals of vacant properties. Well, there's revenue generated from that, and those accounts are the ones where the money goes into. So there's a rental account, vacant property account, residential, and vacant account, commercial. Each one gets filled up with the fees and fines that she collects.
I have a question about that. And so it said the estimated, the estimated revenue for those things is zero.
That's one of the ones we moved, so it was actually originally in public safety. So if you're looking at the public safety account-
I'm going to make a Police Department copy.
And so now it should be in the Police Department. So, let's see, let me find that.
Yeah, it says that activity, which I know the activity is not zero for 2025, because we just looked it up. So that's going to increase the revenue, right?
Yeah.
So I can-
I have it on my paper.
Yeah, this one says Police Department General Fund Estimated Revenues, vacant registration for residential and commercial, both at zero.
Yep, so if you flip back to the Public Safety General Fund, which is like one page behind the one you're at, there is, that is where it was located before, but I moved it over to the Police Department.
It's going to go to the 7,500 and the 2,000?
Yep, it'll go over to the Police Department's. So it's just a matter of reorganizing the Department, to place it in the Police Department, which is where the employee is located who does that. So just a little more linear budgeting.
And then I also had a, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish. Well, the animal pickup, it says, and it says zero all the way across. That's the charge that we're charging people when their dogs get picked up and go to Romulus?
I don't believe so.
I'm just wondering what that charge is for. It doesn't look like we've done anything since '24 for that. It says animal pickup.
Yeah, I don't-
So if we're picking up a stray and we have to take it, the police have to take it to Romulus, we're not charging for that?
There's no current mechanism for that right now. It was an account created by the previous administration as part of our revenue accounts. But actually, I think there's some potential to, to examine that process for that.
Absolutely.
And we have an account for it. But it's not something we've done in the past. Usually, what you'd see, it'd be located, and right below that is civil infractions, that's municipal civil infractions, and he'll talk about that in one second. But those, those type of revenue would come from the citation issued to the person for having the stray animal and things like that, so.
Right, I'm just wondering if we actually charge for the transportation, if the guys have to come get a dog and drive it all the way to Romulus, we're not getting any money for that?
No, their, their charge would likely occur to the person who picked up the dog at Romulus and be paid to Romulus.
And then the last question is, what's the federal grant revenue come from?
The federal grant?
It says federal grant revenue, we get $2,200. It's a count, 301,688,300. Like four from the bottom.
You know, I have to look into it, but it might be interest on money held in account. I'd have to double check.
That number sounds right for the paperwork that I turned in. For, I forget which one it is, but there's an interest line that you-
Yeah, it's rather nominal in the grand scheme, but yeah, it's a, it's likely revenue from the forfeiture money we've held on account.
Okay. I'll have more, keep going.
Okay. We left off with the rental properties. The next item is civil infractions. These civil infractions are the municipal civil infractions that the ordinance department writes, or if you get a snow emergency ticket, it may have been written from an officer. Those tickets have a different process than if you got a speeding ticket. So the municipal civil infraction tickets originate through ordinance, because it's an ordinance violation. You have the option to pay at the ordinance window, if you take care of the problem before the time limit, which is seven days, I believe, to take care of the problem. You can then pay it at the ordinance window, you don't have to go to court. So that's what that line item is for, is anybody that's paying their tickets at the window for the municipal civil infractions. It says civil infractions, but it's not the traffic tickets or those civil infractions, it's the municipal civil infractions. The actual ticket civil infractions, for lack of a description, is in the court items.
I have a question about that also. So it said for the amended budget for '24 and '25 that it was $70,000, but actually, so far through this year, it's only been 14. That was kind of like an overestimate of revenue that we were going to collect, correct? I mean, if we collected 14,000 and it was estimated that we were going to collect 70,000, that seems kind of like-
Yeah, I sigh heavily, because the ordinance department keeps track of these also, and the number isn't necessarily what's recorded here. So I don't know where the discrepancy comes from, but when you look at what they say that they're taking in, they'd say they got about $35,000 in revenue from people paying at the windows versus the 14,000 that's recorded here. I don't know if there's just a glitch.
Okay, but not close to the 70,000 that we estimated as revenue?
Not yet, not, that's for the whole budget year.
So for next year, we're close with that 40,000, you're thinking that's going to be about right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, a lot, that's just dependent on, you know, I hate to say snowfall, but depending on how many snow emergency tickets get written, how many high grass, how much rain we have, how much faster grass grows, and that type of stuff. So we're predicting at 40 to be safe and conservative.
Well, maybe that'll be a question for the judge when he comes up here today.
All right, and the last one, I believe is another new entry. It's the MCOS Continuing Professional Education Funding Account. What it is, back in 18, the legislature, legislature passed legislation that requires police officers to obtain so much training per year, so many credit hours. They also included, fortunately for us, a monetary reward for that. So they reimburse us X amount of dollars per officer to, for us to make sure that we meet these standards. In the last budget year, the current budget year that we're on, it was $500 per officer. We received $16,500 at the time to offset our costs, and they mandated, I believe, that we needed to have 12 hours of training done, four hours that they told us to do, and then eight hours that we were able to elect ourselves to do. For the upcoming year, they are increasing to 16 hours of training required. They mandate eight hours, and then we get to elect eight hours of training. They've also increased the amount of money. It's now $1,000 per officer that they're sending to us. They wrote us a check, apparently they were mailed out, according to the internet, in December. I don't know if we received one or not, and I don't know whether they're counting this at 33, 32, 34, so I'm not sure how much we'll receive, but it should be in the 30s this year, because it's 1,000 per officer. Then we have our expenditure accounts. The first one, it got a great name, Personnel Service Reallocations. So what that accounts for is the Family Resource Center reimburses us for our officers. So when we have a juvenile complaint, and there's juvenile that's referred to the Family Resource Office, Resource Center, we get reimbursed for the cost of the officer's time on that case. So I believe at the end of the year, sometime in June, they reconcile everything and give the city a check for the amount of time that the officers put in. So we do get reimbursed for our officer's time for those recommendations. We have the Education and Training Fund. That's largely reimbursed by the state funding that I just mentioned, and we also apply for grants from MMRMA to try to offset costs. So MMRMA, obviously, is our insurance carrier. They like the fact that we have training, it limits our liability, so they tend to offset the cost of some training. The ones that stand out are like Staff and Command School, which is expensive training, it takes about 10 months, the SHIELD Leadership School, schools like that. They also, throughout the year, will offer discounted trainings on other type of... So that's what that one is. This is a new one, the Capitol Outlay Office Equipment and Software. That's where we're going to start to show our expenditures for the reoccurring stuff, such as the flocks, flock cameras, and the body worn cameras, the in-car cameras. The drone, at this time, we're just paying out of pocket when we need to re-up. We haven't entered into subscription service yet for anything. And the drone, we, pretty sure we own clear and free now. Tasers, our taser contract expired somewhere around 18, 19. We haven't renewed any contracts with them, so we don't have anything coming from them at this time. So it's really just going to be your flock and Axon contracts that'll come out of there. Last but not least, this is an old account, it's just the Shared Dispatch Services, which is the expenditure account for our participation in United 911 Dispatch Center. That involves the communities that are listed, and then it also pays for our non-emergency call answering services, which are provided by Wayne PD. Believe it's about $418,000 that we pay for those services. Moving on, we'll get back to that probably near the end of this one. So staffing at GCPD, how is it staffed? So we have three divisions, you could call it. We have the Patrol Division, which covers patrol operations, community resource officers. In 2023, we had a grant from the schools. We were able to add the second SRO to the middle school, so we now have one at the high school, one at the middle school. As I mentioned earlier, the schools apparently like so, because they're trying to see if we can get them full-time year-round, which is a good thing. And then we also had the Investigations, which is Detective Bureau, those Task Force Officers that I mentioned earlier, that are working outside different agencies. Then we have the Records and the Code Enforcement Bureau, which is code enforcement records. We maintain our records, training, our certifications, property, its managements. So those, that's how the staffing is broken down at the PD. And this is how the staffing currently is being budgeted for the next budget year. We'll have 33 sworn police officers, which equals about 1.32 per 1,000 residents. So the thing with that number of 33 that needs to be taken into consideration is, when we send an officer, because they're not certified to the academy, it shows up as part of my 33 sworn police officers, but they're not out on the street, they're in the academy. And then the academy is four months. And then when they get out of the academy, they enter into our training program, which is a field training evaluation program. That's another four months. So when we hire these officers who need to be sent to the academy to become sworn officers, it's an eight-month deal. So when you see the number 33 like you do here, I can tell you that we have one officer that's in the academy currently, so that's 32. We have one vacancy, that's 31. We have two officers in the field training program that I mentioned, so they're not solo yet. So you can take those two off, and you get down to like 29. So we have 29 sworn officers that can come to your house and take the report by themselves. So the number is true, it's just you've got to look at like, where's the staffing at in those 33 people? So it's a reality. We have four full-time civilian employees, the records clerk, two code enforcement officers, and one executive administrative assistant. And then we will have two code enforcement clerk slash officers for the next budget So building the Police Department of the future, where are we going to focus? We're going to focus on traffic safety for this next year. Looking on the stats, we've had 715 crashes this year, 40 of them involving injuries. So we're basically about two crashes per day. Historically, last year, we were at 800 and... Excuse me while I find that number for you. About 863 crashes last year, the year before, 765. 2021, 778. 2020, we were down to 601 crashes. So that's a number that, I don't like any of these numbers, but I would rather be into the sixes than the 715 or this 863. I think 2023 may be a little bit of an anomaly, because Merriman Road was closed, and I was looking at one of the crash maps that I could find on the internet, and it looks like the trade-off was Merriman was closed, there's no activity, but Middle Belt was just lined with crashes on that map. So I have to believe that funneling everybody on the Middle Belt Road just increased the amount of congestion and traffic, and it decreased our accidents for that year. However, I still find 715 to just be too bad, too many. Two per day definitely is too many. So I like to focus on that, and I'm looking to get a 5% to 10% reduction the first year. Got to have a goal, I think that's a fair goal. Reduce it somewhere between 35 to 70 crashes. We'll do that with our 33 sworn police officers. What we'll do is we will staff one officer as a traffic resource position. We had that in the past, 2018, 2019, 2020, we started. It worked out really well. We were able to really knock down on stuff, as you can see, 2020, 601 accidents. So again, I'd like to get back to that number. I'd really like to get to the number in the picture, but I don't know if we can do that or not. Oh, wrong button. Back. I like this. So the importance of traffic safety is pretty self-evident, but it prevents accidents, it saves lives, it stops injuries. You know, injuries take a toll on everybody, so we can help to reduce the economic, social cost of the crashes. It promotes early movement of traffic, and obviously, it'll enhance, enhance the public trust in law enforcement. What are some common traffic violations? We have the speeding, distracted driving, texting while you're driving, driving under the influence, running red lights, stop signs, and then the reckless and aggressive driving that we get called on frequently. I looked, and they're pretty much spot on. Garden City Ticket Production pretty much mimics that. So speeding is our number-one violation. Distracted driving, texting, talking on your cell phone is number two, and then disregarding traffic signals is number three. So I was kind of surprised that we're actually in line with that. What's our enforcement? Number one, we're going to increase the patrol presence. How are we going to do that? Well, we're bringing back the traffic officer. He'll be out there with dedication just to traffic. We'll also have the officers that are working when they're available to be out there on side streets or other high-crash intersections, for lack of a better word. We'll resort back to community engagement and education. That seems to work very well for us in the city. We worked well with the community. As you know, we used Operation Safe Stop this year back in October. That was a nationwide program that we joined, and we followed the school buses for a month, week, within the month of October, just to make sure that nobody was violating the red lights when they stopped and everything else. I think we had really good numbers, but I think we were one ticket. We only had one violator that whole entire time. It worked out well. We'll bring that back. The other thing we did was school starting. We were at the schools the first two weeks of school, just to have a presence out there. We also use this data-driven policing to find the hotspots, where are accidents occurring, where are our violators showing up, where can we be? Another area that we will revisit is, we were able to, 2023, we were able to put out the speed limit violation signs, the little digital ones, and we also painted stripes on the road, Hubbard, Henry Ruff, Harrison. Well, now we're going to go back and see, did that make a difference? Are people still speeding? Did they slow down? Does this have value? Is it worth investing in more around our schools and we get a reduction in safety? So we're going to revisit that also and see where that stands. And then obviously, technology and traffic enforcement. We are immersed in technology with our flock license plate readers. Those help us immensely, you know, we're always up here telling you about success stories, finding this person, finding that person. You have a hit and run, we have access to the license plate readers to track down the person that did the hit and run. Body worn cameras, dash cams, what does that do? That just gives us transparency and buy-in from the community. You get stopped for speeding or whatever, we've got video. Radar, lidar, that's obviously how you do your radar detection. Drones for traffic monitoring and crash reconstruction. I like the drone, too. What we've been doing, had success, is you call us in for, say, parking in front of a fire hydrant or blocking a sidewalk, we can send a drone out there before we send an officer and go, oh yeah, it's still there. Send the car. Oh, it's gone. We can't do any action, because the car's gone. So it's somewhat of a, I won't call it a force multiplier, because there's no force involved, but it does give us a little bit quicker response and doesn't take up an officer's time, so he can continue what he's doing.
Can we have the drone just start dropping tickets?
They got cameras in some state that just takes a picture and mails you a ticket, why can't we? So that's the plan there. We want to do effective traffic enforcement that enhances the safety. We want to do effective traffic enforcement that enhances the safety. I feel with the way that the downtown's being developed, and we've got restaurants down there now, we got the banquet hall that'll open shortly, probably, we've got a bakery. We really need to get down there and have a presence and take this traffic safety, really enforce traffic safety there to make it safe, so when this does start to boom, we're ahead of the game, not behind and chasing it. So we've got that. I already explained how we'll try to use our technology. Community involvement is key, we've got a great community, I think that we do our best to get them involved, and we will continue to try that even with this traffic safety program. And then we'll just continuously try to improve and adapt as needed. So if we, Middle Belt and Block, I don't think will ever slow down, but if, you know, that slows down and we get a handle on that, we'll move to the next spot, and the next spot, wherever it needs. So at future considerations, we'll just keep updating our radio preps. Twenty-twenty-seven, there's supposed to be some level of encryption that we don't currently have, so we're going to have to update those. Car radios, same thing, body cameras, in-car cameras, tasers, firearms. Our tasers, I think we bought them in fifteen or eighteen or something like that, they're the second generation of taser, and there's three more generations since we bought them. So they're getting outdated with technology, and we can't do anything now, but it's just something to keep in the back of our heads. Same thing with firearms, I think our firearms are good, but, you know, there's new technology out there that'll increase our proficiency, stuff like that. This was something that we always talk about, return the non-emergency phone answering to Garden City, you know, have Garden City people answering Garden City phones, it just, it's a better connection. This year, we probably aren't, again, going to be able to move forward on that. If we can, great, but it's just something for future consideration. Continuous training officers, the legal updates, the leadership training, new technology, new techniques, new ways of thinking. I mean, I came in here, and training to me is so important, it's such a liability limiter that we just need to continue that as best we can. The state now helps us out with that, a little bit of money for each officer. And then continue to train officers and medical first responders. That's a hard one. It's a really important thing to do, and it's, I think it's necessary, but the training now for each officer is three weeks long. So when you have staffing levels that we have, it's hard to make a commitment to a three-week school for that officer and take him and put him in there. So we just have to look at ways to try to get that accomplished still, but the state upped it from two weeks to three weeks, so that's where we're at on that. Cool. I'm out of slides.
Thank you, Chief. I had two points that I caught. One, I liked the part about the work that's going to be going on at Ford and Middle Belt. I think we're going to start seeing some work done at the Omazoni thing, some construction and stuff going there, which should increase a lot of stuff, and the Kmart property, I believe, is going to get going relatively soon, at least hopefully. And also, at one of the conferences I was at, they were talking about it's going to be mandated that we have to have the encrypted radios coming up, and they gave a cost of something really silly, like ten grand a radio or something. So hopefully, hopefully that they'll, they'll have some more information at some of the meetings I go to of grants or state funding that we can get into and hopefully offset that cost. It's a whole lot of money, but... Other than that, counsel?
I have lots of questions. I know that we pay for a lot of things, but our officers are still paying for some of their own supplies, correct? Don't they have to pay for some of their gear?
Sure, I mean, boots.
That's what I'm saying, so even though we're...
Uniforms.
That's what I'm saying, so even though we have all this stuff in our budget, we still don't even have enough to pay for all their stuff, right?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, I mean, it's...
I want to pay for that if we had the money, that's what I'm saying, but, so even though we pay for this, all these things that you listed, they still are, end up paying for some of their own stuff, which is kind of sucky. Have we talked with any other departments about shifts and that kind of thing when we have to cut back on manpower, when we talk about so many guys? I know that, I talked to the city manager about this before, we hear other departments that have gone to twelve-hour shifts or ten-hour shifts, certain amount of days, so that they cut back on their overtime, but still get the coverage. Are we looking at anything new like that?
Yeah, we have some things that we can try and do. You know, we looked at tens, we, the Patrol Division was interested in tens, but with the current number that we're going down to, it doesn't become feasible, you just increase your overtime because it's short. You know, we looked at going back to eights, because then could you manipulate the overtime on, with an eight-hour shift, so it's not as much? Because obviously now if we lose one officer, it's a twelve-hour day, probably.
Right. How are we with overtime? I know that we weren't budgeted very well for that last year, is it going to be better this year? I know that.
So we were budgeted thirty-six officers, we could fill to thirty-five. I think, I wrote down some numbers, so July first, when I took over, we were at thirty-three with two in FTO and one in the academy, so that's like twenty-nine officers. You know, our shift-level staffing is just, is just going to be that overtime, so we really got to get creative. One of the things I'm thinking about is obviously playing with the hours. So we're still twelve-hour shifts by contract, but can we manipulate the hours a little bit to have better coverage on spots that need to get covered?
Right, like the days are the hours that are slower, maybe there's an overlap or something.
You know, here's an example, so we're at, today's date, we've got thirty-two officers, two of them are in FTO, so they don't count for overtime, and one is in the academy, so we're at twenty-nine. This weekend, unfortunately, one of our officers got hurt. They went on a run where a person was suffering psychosis. When they showed up, he was actively hands-on with another person, so they had to immediately go hands-on. When they go hands-on, they take out the taser that we talked about, they deploy the taser, but our current tasers fire one cartridge at a time that has two darts. Both darts have to make contact with the person for the electricity to go through the body and you get the neural disruption. Well, if you ever looked at our current tasers, that one cartridge, it's kind of like horses that you keep in the barn overnight, and then when you let them out in the morning, they just kind of go like this and this. There's no control over them once you fire. So one hit the person, the other one didn't, so the taser's ineffective, so they're back to hands-on again, and this person's suffering psychosis, so he's not going to feel any pain, and they don't want to hurt him because he's not intentionally trying to hurt anybody. So by the time they wrestle him and everything else, our officer got hurt, the person that was having the psychosis got hurt, you know, so now I have an officer that's not serviceable for the road anymore till he gets better.
Right.
So we've lost another body, so there's more overtime, so how do you plan for those type of things?
Right, that's why I want to make sure we have enough budgeted for overtime, because if you need any overtime, the places where we would want to spend it.
Right, and that's why we got to figure out how not to use that, how to, like, how do we cover it? Because you just run out of bodies.
Right.
You got the money in the bank, but you don't have a body to carry it, so...
Well, Nate said he'd work more.
I don't know if he can.
My other question is, the school covers the charge for our school resource officer?
Is that one more?
The school pays for our school resource officer?
Yes.
Okay. And then when we talk about tasers, and the mayor talked about radios, those things are becoming more and more expensive by the year, and when we talk about that, we talk about things that have gone up a huge amount in just twelve months. So if our taser contract is out, and we're going to need those soon, and they're not working that great, is, are we getting any bids or anything for that stuff this year? Because it might be twenty-five percent more next year when we don't have that money.
Yeah, the taser, which is run by Axon, yeah, each year it's going to go up a certain amount of money. When we looked at it, it was currently going to cost us about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars over five years. It was about twenty thousand dollars per year, it worked out to be.
And this is the same company that we used to get them the last time?
Yeah.
Do we ever get new bid?
They're the, they're the only company that makes that taser, so you can either buy it from the manufacturer as a sole source, or you can pay a step-up charge to go to a third party. Nobody's going to give you the same price as taser for the tasers.
Okay.
I've looked online, because, you know, I'm like, can we just buy, they just call it a handle, basically, so you're just buying the yellow thing, and like, can you go online and buy them? Yeah, but you're going to pay a markup over what, so...
And then what else was, are we doing anything with AI to save money?
No.
Yep. Has that been addressed at all? I know we talked about that, I was at a couple seminars and conferences, and I think I mentioned it to the judge before, if, when the guys are writing reports, if they can use AI and if that would count in court and that kind of thing, because it talks about how much time it saves. So instead of an officer having to spend two hours writing a report, he uses AI, still says it's his report, it just helps him do it faster so he can get back out to do something else.
That's interesting.
So I know I mentioned it to the judge last year, and so maybe that's something else we can bring up to save some time.
Yeah.
That, that gets brought up every conference that we go to about AI in the police departments.
Do they talk that there's a fee involved, or is it just a free source of AI?
It's like a thing that you sign up for, just like, online, but there's one specifically for police departments, and most of it is for ordinance, but there are ones for criminal reports that it is legal, it just has to be a certain amount, but it just supposedly saves a ton of time.
I imagine, yeah.
And they said it's easier for the officer because there's more resources, like ten different resources, how they're referring to it, like it shows all the, the charges and however you code it and everything like that, so. It just talked about how much money saving there was for that.
Yeah, I know, we tried a Dragon Slayer program or something, which is where they could just talk, kind of like dictation into the computer, but that never picked up with the guys, so...
Yeah, this was a, we actually saw it, they showed it to us at the last conference last year in Alabama, where they had a police officer there, and he, you know, did like a traffic stop and I think it was a DUI, and it showed the AI, and it showed it pull it up, and how he wrote the report, and he was done in like six minutes and back on on the road, and...
Pretty cool.
Yeah, it was kind of cool. And then the other thing I see that, that went up just a little bit was life insurance. Is that because our insurance is going up for police officers because their job is getting more dangerous, or I see that it's increasing?
I have to defer on that.
Like, it was thirty-five thousand, and now we're like up to fifty or forty-seven or something like that. Are we just offering more life insurance because they need it?
I'm not, I'm going to defer on that one, I don't know where that number came from.
Okay, well, the city manager can look that up, then.
Yeah, I imagine that is a cost of, just the cost of a plan, most of, oh, well, and there are, there were some increases, I believe, in the, in the contract negotiations related to those type of areas.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
And then the last question I have is about, it seemed like last year, every time we saw an increase in the budget, it was from like vacation payoffs. There's no way for us to estimate that, right? So...
No, I think there's a formula, but it just, it so fluctuated.
Because it, like, one year it was hardly anything, and the next year it was like a ton of vacation payoff. And then do we have anybody that's up for retirement this year?
We have one person that's eligible that I know of.
He's not in the room, right? Okay. Okay.
Well, let me look.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, and further comments from the table? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our fire department. I'll call up Chief Randy Keane.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pulls us up a weight here. We good? All right. All right, we're kind of getting to our slide here, kind of what we've accomplished, accomplished for this year. Some of the things that we've done through, either through the CIP or through a grant here, you can see, is the SCBA's, which I know was approved through you with a ten percent match. We received those in the end of July, put them into service in August, I think September first, on about September first. As you can see, that was a significant savings for the city. But those were on a ten-year replacement plan. We were at, just at the ten-year mark, so the grant came in at a great time, so that was a great benefit for us. And the second thing on the bottom there is the grant for the additional set of firefighting gear that allows for our guys to be able to have an additional set, so if they're exposed to any of those contaminants or carcinogens, they can come back, take the gear off, exchange it for the other set, properly clean it, let it dry as, as required to reduce those exposures. So that grant was fully funded by the state, so it's zero cost to the city, sixty-six thousand was for twenty sets of gear. Every current member at the time was able to get a second set, so we have, we have a couple sets actually that are still new for people who are, who are not with us anymore, but the grant was funded and submitted prior to their, their leaving. The other thing we've obviously been working on is our station renovation. You'll see some of the pictures here compared to last year's, I know they're, they're far different. The south side of the station internally is about ninety-five percent completed. It still has some stuff to be completed on the outside, as, as we can see as we, we look at the building. The north side of the station is still under, under construction. They have drywall and some things in the kitchen going. The walls are done, still waiting on the roofing to be completed, to be able to progress in that area. Kind of going through incident counts per year, you can see here, this is a pretty showing graphic, I guess, of the increase of, of call volume that we have. Usually you see it's about around a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five incidents increase per year. Twenty-twenty-three, we had a significant increase, not sure why. Two, one reason, well, two reasons I do know, was we had two large ice storms, which were about a hundred and sixty runs. So that will account for some of that, but the rest was just kind of across the board, just, there was increase across the board. Last year in twenty-twenty-four, you can see it came back down to where it'd be about the hundred and, you know, a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty more than the previous year, so we're kind of trending on that path right now as well, just through this year, just on average. It's just under about eleven per day, we average. So budget, here's our historical budget for the last four years. You can see there's a little bit of an increase per year, and then the bottom one is the projected increase for this year is the four-point-eight-one-seven million. We'll get a little bit further into that, some of the details for that. Currently on this year's budget, we're projected to be just under four-point-seven million. So funding mechanism, very similar to the, the police chief stated, we obviously have the Public Safety Millage, which generates just a little bit over a million dollars, the general tax revenue, and then we have revenue generated from EMS and fire prevention. So I'll get a little bit further into the EMS, how much in, how much it generates and how, and the same thing with the fire prevention. The Public Safety Millage for us funds about twenty percent of our department, the overall budget. So here's EMS revenues. As you can see, the historic trend here, it's increasing. Just back in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one is four-hundred-seventy-four thousand. These are actual numbers, and then you can see it increased small, twenty-two, twenty-three was a significant increase, and then a little blip in twenty-three, twenty-four. That was a reporting issue. Our program that uploads to our billing company wasn't sending the reports in, and we didn't know. So there was about a two-and-a-half-month window where they weren't getting any, but they did get them all, and it's, it's caught back up. So, but that's why you'll see that number's down a little bit. Currently, this four-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, I just got the numbers today, we're at, we're above that. We're at like five hundred, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars year-to-date. From, actually, yes, from last July first. Projected to be six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. We probably will go a little bit above that. That's the number that's projected in the budget. Right now, it's just under the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar mark, it looks like is where we're going to come in, based upon the runs and the runs average that we have. Part of that is, last year, the collection rate was about seventy-six percent, this year we're up to about eighty-four percent. So there, there is a reason behind the increase in revenue, on top of the fact that we have more runs that we're doing and more transports. We've gone about a hundred transports for the last three years per year, so that would also account for that. Next year, obviously, we're going to project that we'll be right around the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar mark for the EMS. Fire prevention, so I'll show you here on the next slide how we get to the point where we're generating revenue for that. The fire marshal goes out and he inspects every business every year. Last year was four-hundred-and-forty businesses, he got, now, he doesn't get that from July to June, it's a rolling calendar, so sometimes it might be a little heavier one month and less the next month, but they're all done within that calendar year. It's a requirement for their business license, it's a requirement for them to have that, so he gets out there and does that. There are some caveats to that, schools, hospitals, things like that fall under the state. He gets invited out to that, but that's not under our jurisdiction. Obviously, this is for compliance for community safety, that's the most important thing for this. And then also, we do generate a little bit of money for plan reviews and CVO inspections. The only hard part about that is, we're kind of subject to, are we getting new businesses? Are they moving into the buildings? Are they renovating their buildings? Are they moving into the buildings? Are they renovating their buildings? So we really can't control that, but we do generate some revenue from that. So here's the fire prevention revenues. Historically, prior to this, it's kind of difficult because it was incorporated into the business license. They were, the charge was incorporated into that. So we really don't have a breakdown of it. But the last year, year and a half here, we have this. So last year was 28,550 was generated through those inspections. This year, we're already at 24,000 on pace for about 31.5. And then you can see the plan reviews are just above last year's and the CFOs are down. So like I said, we really can't control that. Just a matter of what, what's required by, by the businesses moving in. So kind of what are we looking at here in the next year moving forward? We have a couple of areas of cost reductions and we also have an area that's, could be pretty significant in additional funding. We're going to reduce our staffing by three budgeted positions. I'll go through the staffing here in a minute. There are three vacant positions at this point. We did have a gentleman retire in November and then this past month, we had one that resigned. Training. We've saw a reduction in that and we're allowed to use state funds. So the firework money, that firework money, we get portion of that back and that's utilized for, for training throughout the area. So Wayne County gets a, a certain amount of money. There's consortium of, each member has a representative on it and they get together and discuss training and what we can put on. But it's money that comes from the state that we can utilize for training rather than spending it out of our budget. And then vehicle maintenance. This is, we're going to see probably about a third reduction in it this year. This, I assume is just a direct relation to, we have a newer fleet. Last year we had a little bit higher, but when we got our Quint, we had our engine that was there that we weren't allowed, we couldn't take out of service to get service because we only had one. So we did have a little bit more funding that was utilized for that. But this year we're just, you know, brakes, oil changes, things of that nature. Some minor, minor stuff, but nothing that large. And it's, but it's a newer fleet, a lot of stuff under warranty, a lot of stuff is just newer. So. And then additional funding. Now, this is something that can generate 150 to 180,000. This was just, it was passed through at the state level and the governor signed it at the end of January. It's called Michigan GEMT. What it is, their Medicare, Medicaid funding, it's from the federal government funding. It gives us an opportunity to collect more revenue for those transports that we do medically. What they had us do is they had us put our figures into a, a calculator to kind of get a rough estimate where we'd fall for that. Ours came in around 150 to 180,000. They feel we'd generate extra. The bad part about this point is we don't know how it's going to be going yet. It was just signed at the end of January. So there's no process yet to get it going. It's in process, but we don't know how to, we're going to collect that yet. I assume that we'll have some help from our billing company. They obviously have a vested interest in that as well, did more revenue. So, but that is, that's a positive for us. We can generate some extra money. Staffing levels. So if you look at our staffing levels for the last, I guess, 12 years here in the fire department, you're going to see a couple back to 2013. This was coming kind of out of the, the Great Recession here where we, we cut down to our, our low. We had 14 members in suppression and one chief. At that time, we, we were able to get a safer grant, which are not as easy to get anymore and is, are not as funded. We got four positions for that. They were funded for three years at percentages. First year was 100%, I believe. The second year was 65 and then 50 and then fully on the city after that. That got us back to 18 for the staffing level, which you see in 2014. 2018, we were able to write another safer grant and this time they were only doing it to add personnel. So from that, we got back to the 21. After that was 2019, we went to 21. Same, same type of program, the safe, for the safer positions. Worked out great for us. We were able to add manpower at that time. As you can see in 2021, we were at 21. And then you also see the total staffing and the administration went from one and a half to two and a half. That was a return of the fire marshal, 2019. So that's where you'll see that, that change in that. So the administration side, that's pretty much stayed the same since then. We've had a couple of different, you know, administrative assistants, but the level's been the same there as far as the number. In suppression, 2020 was our high point being at 21, being able to find people. We've, we've struggled at times, just like other communities. We maintained at 20 for a couple of years. That last year, we dropped down to 19 with our retirement. And then currently we're at 18. So it's at 20 and a half, which is what we're, we're budgeted moving forward. So that's kind of what this covers. Here's our current staffing with 21. Myself, fire marshal, part-time administrative assistant, and then 18 suppression members. We do have one, possibly two pending retirements this year. One for sure is put in his intent to retire. The other one, we're, he's up in the air still. So we don't know if he's going to retire or not. So that will drop us below that 18. So I know we've discussed like where we're at for the budget, but that will take us below that. So. Radio grant. I know this was kind of a hot topic. So there are the legacy radios. So some of the things, starting in January of next year, they won't be able to repair the radios is what it is. If they're on the system, they can stay on the system. And then I know there's some encryption things coming forward. From our end, we have looked at some grant issues. We actually have a grant written right now for our prep radios. There's eight communities, I believe, that was written for. It's submitted. We don't know when we're going to hear about it, but we have also tried funding through the CWW, through Senator Peters. With the fire chiefs, we've tried that and we've been unsuccessful. For our, like the Western Wayne Mutual Aid Association, they were looking around 15 million dollars for just the fire department side of things. So it's, it's pretty expensive. The prep radios right there are like 8,500 dollars apiece. So that doesn't include the programming or anything like that as well. So just the radio itself. Kind of look to the future. Obviously with the CIP, we're going to put some things on hold here, but we will look to replace some aging equipment in the future. I know we had some things like hoses, stair chairs, monitors, but we also have a possibility of some other funding mechanisms there. I know some of the opiate money, some of those things we received that we could possibly use for some of this stuff. So there are some other ways that we can look at it without actually going into the CIP. And then training of personnel. We've started doing this for CPR and car seats. We have one member that who was certified in each of those just recently. So we're going to look to kind of put those classes on for both inside, internally and externally potentially. So the car seat's a little difficult. They have to be more like, you have to, obviously, CPR, they can sign up where the car seats, like it's obvious somebody who had, recently had a baby or has a baby. So, but we can, we can, starting to do that where they'll call, set up appointment, come in and we can verify that stuff. All right. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for the fire chief?
Sure.
Councilman McCarefotos.
What are our contractual services?
So contractual services, you'll see that went up a little bit this year. So it went from 6,000 to 16,000. The 6,000 covers, it's our ESO program, which is our documenting program, and then the brick system, which is our alerting program. Those are just around 6,000. The other $10,000 was put in there for the project management company that's we're being, is being utilized for the fire station renovations.
Okay.
For next year. That, that should come out when that, when that's complete. So it'll go back to right around that $6,000 mark.
Okay. And the number that we have in there for overtime is going to cover us?
Correct. Did barring any injuries or I know like we have vacancies or whatever, this is the number we're, we're pretty close to based upon the historic numbers.
Okay. And then I see how much our retiree Blue Cross went up and that, that again is just because we have more retirees and that is increasing.
We have more retirees also than we have current employees. Yes.
That's, and then are we, if this other person retires and maybe the second person retires, are we having in our budget to replace either one of them?
That's the intention at this point. So what we did is we kind of looked at those numbers. We ran it, what would the overtime be with, if we didn't replace them compared to what we did? And there is a little bit of a savings, but not, not a tremendous savings. Number one, number two, it's the wear and tear on the, on the people.
Yeah.
And then the potential for injury there as well. So.
I know that in the past, we've had trouble, I won't say have trouble, but just meeting, matching other cities for what they're paying and what we can pay. And I know Detroit has raised theirs a lot. Are, are we going to have an issue hiring again, do you think?
I don't, I don't foresee that. We do have existing lists with a couple of people left on it.
Oh, good.
What I would say is we have also been able to, I know we've talked about this in the past, we hire basic EMTs or paramedic school. It's been very successful for us. We've had seven people who have done it and they've, they've obtained their paramedic license. They need a lot of time. So that's another program that we have that some other cities don't have. That has been very successful for us.
Good.
The only thing I'd like to say is like the 18 compared to 21, I know we've talked about like running two rescues. That, that's where that will be. Like our services will not change. We'll still provide the same amount of services. It's just a matter of whether, how many days we'll be able to staff a, a second rescue in town. So we may have to utilize the mutual aid at times, just the same as they utilize us.
Sure.
I know I send those numbers out to you guys every month and it's, it's, we, we respond more than we receive. So we, we do as much as we can to maintain our services and keep them here. So.
Okay. Well, that's what our residents wanted to hear. That's why I asked.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments from the table? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Oh, I have one, I have one more question, just real quick. Ryan?
You almost got away.
The, the CVO that we do for the businesses, we never do that for like rentals or residents?
For residential's, no. So.
Our building department handles that?
For houses.
For rentals?
For rentals, we do not at this time. I know it's some discussion I've had with the fire marshal about this, particularly in like apartment buildings, multiple family, not so much like the.
I just mean we have thousands of rental houses, but we're not our fire marshal.
Not at this time. So it's something we're looking at. And like I said, initially, we're looking at like apartment buildings, like let's getting into those and doing that. Obviously it affects more people. So.
Okay.
They're all important. I won't say that, but it's, it's a larger target audience.
Okay. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Okay. Next up is our communications director, Mr. Zach King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to talk about the communications department, or better known as GCTV. I want to first talk about what the department did in 2024, go over some statistics from 2024, and then talk about 2025 and next fiscal year. What we do is the communications department, we do a lot of video. That's the board and commission meetings, tonight's meeting, video for public events and stuff like that, special events and support and coverage, something we've kind of expanded upon in the past few years, especially that support aspect. Online, social media and display boards around the city, the city website, connecting with the community, some emergency notification, software management, road project support, special projects and marketing and promotion, which I'll dive into a little bit about each one of those. First off, the video, like I said, the city council meetings, the board commission meetings, thankfully not this year, but election coverage, interviews, promos, features and some special events. Some of those special events include these that we've done in 2024 is GCA opening day and a few of their tournaments, Veterans Day and Memorial Day ceremonies hosted here, the Chili Cook Off Community Festival, Police and Fire in Deep W open houses, which have all folded into that festival, the ice skating shows at the Ice Arena, Parks and Rec events, the DEA community tree lighting, the Santa Ride volunteer recognition and many more. Two new events we actually did in 2024 include the playground grand opening at City Park and the American Legion renaming ceremony. We also did a bit of promotion for the Qantas pig race that just happened this past weekend. Some of our online and social media president, presence, the department manages the online presence of, of social media for the city. This includes contents, posts and user management along with training other departments and how to effectively increase their online presence. I did a little bit of statistics here for online and social media. This is some of our biggest outlets to the community. I know a lot of these numbers, you know, these are just some big numbers. This is for 2024. I've also included more detailed numbers and a little bit of information about like what our views are and stuff like that in those monthly council reports that you guys get. Facebook, Nixol, YouTube, Instagram, and that displays column, that's kind of a mix of stuff. That's the city channel where we put slides out and the Ice Arena, Radcliffe, and here all have displays in the lobby and on the front lawn. That 234 slides, thankfully I did not do them all myself. A lot of those from this past year came from the library, the Parks and Rec Department, Ice Arena. That's just a total. Those new displays are both at Radcliffe and the Ice Arena. The city website, we are currently in the project of a redesign that's going to launch in May. I've also reviewed 215 pages in 2024. It might not seem like much of a number, but that's actually a lot, a lot of work. The pay, the city's website currently has 510 total pages of the 510, 347 are public. So that's about 163 pages that are hidden or in drafts. When I got here, that, that number was 510 public pages. So we've been kind of getting, getting the page count down, trying to make sure the information that is on the website is accurate and correct. Get with the departments to update that information if it's not, or get to the correct department. There's PDFs and such too. That's not counted in the count, page count, that those also have to be updated. A lot of mistakes or errors are usually reported online by even by the community members, which is awesome. That helps us get through those pages as well. But something kind of my free time that going through all those pages, I've been able to clean up the website a bit. That redesign does not include content. So even though Civic Plus this year per their contract is helping us with that redesign, which will give the website a new look, does not do anything for content. So something we're also doing with Civic Plus this year is reviewing our navigation with them. So they're going to go through our entire navigation and kind of help us clean it up. When I first got here, I even changed the first five pages on the top, but previously the department's page wasn't there. It was a services page, but it wasn't what people were visiting. So we changed it and we're going to change it again to follow again what people are looking for most on the website. We do have a pretty good activity time on our website, which is three minutes and 25 seconds, which is actually up a minute from last year. But that shows us that people are getting where they want to get to, finding that information and staying on that page. The redesign will also introduce a mega menu, which will help get to those pages a little bit quicker. With our top headers can be government, department, services, community, and how do I. Just a quick look at the redesign, because we're kind of in the middle of it right now. This is not set in stone, but this is kind of what we're looking at. A new header bar up top, a new photo up top, easier, quicker way to sign up for notifications and get to our social media, but more condensed space. And then those quick activity buttons, which will take you to the top 15 pages people use mostly and get to them quickly. Scrolling down, you'll see those garden city spotlights, just like we have before with our calendar and events at the bottom. Connecting with the, the community, we're trying to reach residents of Garden City, which is struggle, but then we're also trying to attract new community members to our social media. So we try to get posts at one per day. We over succeeded this with 450 posts in 2024. More than 10,000 people follow the combined pages of the city. That includes the police department, fire, parks, ice arena, softball, hockey league, home pantry, the civic theater page and two other groups. Video uploads to YouTube have reached almost 1,400 subscribers. That's up a little bit. Like I said, I think it's 189 from the previous year. And then more than 1,900 people follow the city and other terms of social media. One in social media I did remove from this page, and I hope to kind of move away from is X or previously known as Twitter. We're not getting the engagement on there. I don't think our residents are on that social media. So I kind of want to move away from that, focus a little bit more on Instagram. That is actually getting some views and likes in our content with engagement. And I'm also exploring a new social media next door. They actually, you, you, the city doesn't have to use it. Residents can sign up today just as, you know, with any social media. But Nextdoor kind of reached out to me over a year ago and said, look at all your community members that are already actively using this. If you guys get involved to just further, provides that message to the community. So I'm going to look at that within the next year and hopefully by the website launch, but we'll see. Emergency notifications. For the city. Currently we're in Nixol. We've finalized with them. That contract's going to end June 30th. Normally they do year contracts. We were able to get them into a six-month contract. We were having some trouble with their support and having them service our product. So we're looking to move away from them. Thankfully, at the same exact time, we were already looking at other additions to technology and one of them that came up was Code Red. Code Red is a emergency notification replacement that is going to start July, contractually start July 1st, but they're actually going to give us the product starting May 1st. This is kind of cool that we were able to get two months free from them. So we're going to be able to have an overlap in two different services as we make this transition, but we won't have to pay for it. So that's pretty nice. Code Red, I'm going to probably be coming in front of you guys here soon to talk about that and how people can sign up and the switch from Nixol to Code Red. The plan kind of right now is, is those two months to send everything out on both platforms. And then after July 1st, we'll officially switch over to Code Red, which while we're sending out those Nixol notifications for those two months, also letting people know, hey, you got this now, but this is going to end. Subscribe to the new Code Red. Some of those features and that preloaded emergency contacts I was referencing, Code Red actually works with cell phone carriers. And as long as your phone is not on a do not call list and registered in the 48135 zip code, we can actually preload you into our account only for emergency notifications. So not for general notifications that, like for events and such like that, but for those emergency notifications, we can send those out to those contacts. They have estimated 10,000 contacts, which is double what our Nixol count is right now, can get preloaded. But that does include businesses, home lines, landlines and such like that. So again, So again, it works off that list of if you're not, if you're not, if you're on a do not call list, you won't get that added automatically to the account. But it's kind of, that's a cool feature with Code Red, and the only emergency notification contact that we vetted had that. Thankfully, also, Code Red came in at a very close price to Nixol. It's only a $400 increase from this fiscal year to next, from Nixol to Code Red. And a lot of that is because the state subsidizes that Code Red cost, because the state is also using Code Red for their emergency notifications at this time. Something I hope to do, work on a little bit more better this summer than last, is the road project support. Already, the Communications Department documents the preconstruction videos for all the road projects in the city. That was something started before me, but saw savings from at one time bidding that out. We have all the equipment in-house, we're able to do that. Also, the part I hope to do better with this summer is provide those updates on social media and the website. I'm going to work with DPW and Brad to get the information from our street vendors and on social media and the website with periodic updates, hopefully weekly, but we'll see what the construction looks like this summer. Some of the projects in 2024, that election coverage, why this is at least to me considered a project is we had a millage and a bond that required marketing and promotion that the department spent quite a bit of time on. We were also asked by the Community Development Director, Matt, to kind of rebrand and create a marketing plan of the Chili Cook-Off Community Festival, to create a new logo, a new website landing page, and social media to revamp all that. Earlier, like I talked about, those new displays in Radcliffe and Ice Arena, being able to update those remotely before it was a manual process of making the changes over on my workstation, driving over to Radcliffe and such. I got to give it to Mike at the Ice Arena. He did a lot of work for all his and designs all of his own slides and posts those, and those screens over there look awesome. The communications network migration, I know I've been updating you guys this about in my monthly reports. That is finally almost completed, but that will save the city $500 a month for internet under that line item. So it's a good savings to the Communications Department by joining onto the city's network. The Garden City Buzz redesign, when that was handed over, to me, we, this actual, we worked on 2024, but finished it for 2025. There's a new redesign, we continue to look to improve that. We're doing the website redesign, and then we also reintroduced an intern program that was very successful here before and hope to continue that with a few colleges. We actually have had two interns come through that, actually both here tonight, working on the broadcast. So we're happy to have that. And those interns usually stick around to be volunteers after they're done, so looking forward to that. The staff, the department right now, has one full-time and some part-timers. And then, like I said, also works as volunteers and interns. This budget year, we see a reduction from two full-time employees and part-timers down to one full-time and part-timers. I'm going to try and keep it quick on the PEG fees. This has actually been something we've, I've been kind of monitoring some legislation about too. PEG fees are public education and government fees that are collected on your cable bills of 1% to 2% between the three ISPs we have in the city. We're seeing these PEG fees decrease every single year as people switch away from cable and go to streaming. Something that's kind of exciting, but I see it both ways. There is looking to be some change in legislation that's, legislation that's changing if you were to purchase streaming through your cable provider. So one that we're probably going to see this year is WOW. If you were to, they're trying to move all their customers away from a set box to YouTube TV. If you purchase YouTube TV from WOW, they want to capture that in the PEG fees and franchise fees. That's the bill we're seeing right now. I'm hoping to see this expand even more. I would like to capture the entire ISP bill. The cable that you get to your house is on the same coax line as your internet or your phone today. Didn't used to always be this way, so of course, when PEG fees were invented, they really only wanted to capture on that cable bill because that was the only bill you got of the cable. Now, that cable, the same line that this PEG fees captures on, you also run internet in your phones over that same line. But the PEG fees can still only by law capture on the cable bill. I would like to see when, you know, hopefully soon, that actually capture your entire internet bill. Everyone in the city has internet, but not everyone has cable. So if we could see that change for PEG fees, I think there'd be a huge increase, or we know there would be a huge increase in that revenue, not only for PEG, but also the franchise fees.
We get those fees, the PEG fees?
Yep.
Okay, so that's revenue for us.
Yep, that's, yeah, they actually, if you look on my GL sheet there, there should be one that says cable TV PEG fees. That is directly what we're getting from those three, Comcast, WOW, and it's actually AT&amp;T Universe. So that, and that's a projected number, the 119,500. That is my estimate of what those PEG fees will be next year.
And that's, that's happening soon, right? Because is WOW just stopping in June? Do they want everybody to go to YouTube?
Yeah, the WOW has done the staggered, it's based on area. Garden City, at least we have not been notified that has happened yet. I know there's communities around us that they're looking to completely cut off cable.
I think we just got something in the mail from a while saying that it's coming soon.
They're having a tactic of trying to switch over our customers, pretty much saying that we're, you know, we're looking to terminate it, but at least they have not, they're not physically cutting cable in Garden City yet. At least that they've told us.
Okay.
I know other communities around us, that I've been chatting with them on their PEG fees, because this is, and that's actually why we're seeing that legislation right now, because they're trying to catch up to WOW before they switch over to YouTube TV. We have not gotten that letter, and I don't think there's like another two communities around us that haven't. But there are some areas they're focusing on really moving away, and it all has to do with where their cables and where their stations are. But that is a very real possibility that WOW could completely get away with.
So it's more profitable for our city if right now, if I have WOW and I say I'm going to go over to YouTube, I sign up with WOW to do that, then our city gets more money. If I don't do that and I just get it on my own, the city makes no money?
That is the goal of the legislation right now in the House. Currently, no. The PEG fees do not capture those YouTube TV fees that WOW is charging. But that's, that's what they're trying to change. But that is not currently today, no. If you cut your WOW bill, or you moved today, if you were to move your WOW bill over YouTube TV through them, we would not see the capture for franchise or PEG.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why it's a good start, but also, from a personal perspective, I see just going to YouTube TV and purchasing it directly, then going through WOW. It's nice to have one consolidated bill, and for the city's sake, I hope that's what people do. But I'm not so sure that's what's going to happen.
Is it the same cost for the, for the resident?
I'm actually not sure. I don't, I don't believe so, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure what. Again, WOW hasn't formally told us anything. I do know some of our residents have received letters. I do know, you know, I've seen some stuff online. I've seen this, other cities receive a letter formally from WOW explaining the changes and what it looks like, but we have not received that yet through our franchise agreement.
Thanks.
So hopefully, we see that income. I believe we will. The actually, my, our PEG fees estimates are always underestimated, which I can actually talk a little bit more on the next screen. But hopefully, that's not, hopefully, we don't see a drop in that. At least, hopefully, we get to the 23,600 that I expect for WOW. And then that other revenue line item, we see that road project videos, that's doing the service that we used to contract out when we first got the road millage. Now, but now the Communications Department's doing those preconstruction road videos for that cost. Previous to this year, that money was always spent directly on an expense for additional equipment and stuff like that. That's how it was pitched a few years ago. With trying to cut budgets and stuff this year, that money directly just offsets the cost of running the department.
That's not actual revenue for us. We're just saving money by doing it ourselves.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We're originally, and I was actually trying to find some of these voices from a while ago.
I remember when we had to pay somebody else.
Charging the roadside is a third of what the contractor was charging per mile. So. I wanted to highlight some changes to expenses. Again, like I said, there's salaries and wages for part-timers. We, a year ago, I asked to change half of my part-time balance over to a full-timer. We're now switching it the other way around, going back down to just part-timers. Hospitalization, same thing, from two full-time people to one person. Thankfully, we never actually filled that position, so there's no loss there, but the position won't that. Tuition is changing from no one previously going to college to I am going to college. Contractual services, this biggest, this is a big jump for the department, but this also, this includes the, I'm going to mess up my words here. See Click Fix Chatbot in the mobile app, 15,000, 15,500 that previously came to council. So that's the big jump from the 26 to 42 there. There's also a 2% increase that contractual services is all the software the department uses, mostly being Civic Plus. 13,500 of that will be the website, and 15,500 will be the See Click Fix Chatbot and the mobile app. They have a 2% increase in all their services. So not only do we see that, but we also see the 15,500 that was never in there before. And then memberships and dues of that, just to be what we needed. So the department net revenue estimated is 133,000. These numbers actually drove me crazy this week, and I was trying to figure this out. And I know that we didn't net ever that much before. The reason why that net looks a little bit higher than even, so looking back at 2023, 24, which is the first year that I had the department, I did the budget and I was here staff the entire time. We only netted 91,354. Two factors of that, one, I've cut a lot of our estimates, a lot of our expenses. There was stuff previously that just, I didn't need or didn't feel we still needed, so I cut a lot of those. And then the revenue is always underestimated, because it relies on people using or having cable bills. That number's always underestimated. So that number came in high in 2023. That was 139,243 on our expenses, so we netted 91. So those numbers kind of drove me crazy for me, like, how did we get so high? But those are the reasons why. Looking ahead, we're in continued coverage of city programs and events. We might see a slight decrease of this because of staffing moving forward, but we still hope to reach a lot of those events and city programs. Expanding social media content with Instagram Nextdoor, that's what I was talking about earlier. Additional interviews on, and live Facebook segments. And again, we're working on the website redesign, the See Click Fix management implementation, and the Chatbot implementation. I'm going to quickly go through a little bit of the technology cost. They're not a department. They actually fall underneath that general government services that Tim talked about previously. There's a few GLs in there that cover the technology. Our goal is to eventually move these costs into the departments. But right now, they're in that general government services as they service all the departments. And when I, a few months after I've moved full-time here, I was asked to kind of take a look over our contracts, evaluate spending and stuff like that, because originally, it was kind of not overseen. So the tech division includes Skynet Innovations, which does our day-to-day technology, everything. Networking connectivity providers, software licenses, cybersecurity, the phone services, and server management. Most of that being handled all by Skynet. Here are some projects that Skynet worked on in 2024. These are projects, I kind of just went through real quick and found projects that are outside the scope of the Skynet contract. So these costs of the city above and beyond often paid for out of the individual departments budgets, not the general government services. Some of the stuff that is here with, you know, fiber install at City Hall and Police between the two buildings, FRC computer replacement, the Fire Department network move, and move again into the trailers and back into the new addition. A multi-factor authentication required actually by the state for the court and police. They implemented that. An Axon deployment, UPS install for City Hall, Court, and DPW was actually prompted because of a storm that hit City Hall and took a lot of our computers offline. And then a Fire Department modem project, which is putting modems on our trucks. Very quickly, some of the service requests for 2024, the 1,401 request. As you can kind of see, that is actually all the staff assigned or that worked on our account in 2024. One of them, and a lot of them we know, Will, being 907 requests completed by him. If you break that down, 1,401 tickets, that's $120 technically we pay Skynet per ticket. Not that we pay per ticket, but if you break it down. Again, this is just going to get the requests by month, open and closed. So open by city staff and closed by Skynet. And a little more dive into that. This is the top 25 requesters for the city. I do not know what I put in 171 request for, but it looks like we did a lot. But I like this because it really shows that there's a spread over the departments. Police, fires, Ice Arena, Treasury, clerk, there is someone on each one of those. So it's well represented in the top 25 requesters, which shows there's not one department's using all the service. This is the Skynet, this was actually just given to us a few days ago. They changed their org chart just recently. We're still actually learning a little more of their changes and the hiccups that this provided for us. There's a project management manager team with Will, Tim, and Amanda. And then the more day-to-day people that we see is on the ticket response side. There's a supervisor, Doug Lee, that was just assigned to us. They work in a pod type style. We have three on-tech supports that are dedicated to the city to come in and drive in when we need help. That's Jordan, Marcus, and there's a vacant position. And then something they just added is their remote support pod. So those would be techs that will work through our tickets. We're seeing kind of a slowdown on ticket resolution right now. They're taking a bit longer than they should. Really, most requests should be at least addressed, or the city or employee should receive a response within one business day or two business days, and we're not seeing that. So this is kind of their attack at hoping to cut that response time down. To quickly go over some of the technology expenses, again, these are the general government services. Department right now, Skynet Innovations, our networking connectivity providers. The majority of that cost is the fiber we have running between our buildings and the required quarterly maintenance we have on those lines. So from here to DPW to Radcliffe to the Ice Arena, getting all our networks connected together, that's a large chunk of that cost. Technology licenses, the largest chunk of this is the Microsoft licenses that we have every year for our Outlook and Word and PowerPoint and that for city employees. We're looking, actually, we're looking to cut down, not to skip too far ahead, we're looking to cut down that Skynet Innovations, which we'll talk down a little bit, but we're looking to cut that technology licenses down as well. Microsoft, there's different levels of licenses you can have. And I kind of, this was a year ago, I kind of, it was 50,000 we were paying for that. And I worked on getting a lot of different, at one time, everyone had the highest license. There's technically three levels that really governments fall into. And we moved all of our part-timers over to a level one with some creative play to make sure that licenses could still be used. And I heard, I hope to further expand that in this next renewal coming up in a few months to even get that lower. So 42 is what it would be right now, moving into next year. I hope to bring that down a lot more with some strategic licensing that we do and putting different employees in different levels.
I have a question for you, and this is just for your department. Those technology licenses don't include all the computers at Radcliffe?
Technology licenses is just the, yeah, just our, actually, I'm just trying to remember whatever the numbers are in there. It's just the, the employees licensed to have Outlook, PowerPoint, Excel. So not necessarily, the number you see up top, that's kind of Innovations, which I'll talk more in one more slide, that is a cost that you could directly impact by how many devices are in a department. The technology licenses directly impacted the amount of employees that are in a department. As all the licenses that are in there are based on employee count.
Okay.
One I just wanted to highlight was that dual authentication. Something that actually wasn't budgeted for in either one of those years as that mandate came in. So that cost is directly actually only to court and police as it requires every employee to have a dual license to sign into their machines. So that's a new cost for those, both of those budget years, but that's included. So I just wanted to mention that in that technology licenses, bring that out and show that separately. Phone services, again, this is actually something that we're evaluating. We pay per phone that you see in the buildings. So we're looking to cut down as many phones as we can if they're not being used. Obviously, employees need phones, and we need to be able to communicate and answer the phones with the public calls. But anywhere there's a phone not being used, we're looking to cut that and save on the monthly cost. And then we have some antivirus and spam filter cost. As I kind of mentioned at the bottom, there is a future project. This is actually, I was asked by the previous treasurer to break down all these costs and assign them to departments, so we could actually move them into departments. That wasn't able to happen yet, but that is a plan for the future. To regard that question for the, like you said, for at Radcliffe, this is our device count that Skynet charges us for. And there's a, there's a, for every one of those categories you have left, there is a dollar amount assigned. Currently, our contract, we update this count yearly. So even though we add devices, maybe delete devices throughout the year, the device count changes. I just worked with them on changing that to be a quarterly account, because there actually are some devices at Radcliffe that we cut out, like Computer Lab and such, that is going to save us on that Skynet count. So originally, they think the 107 was a little bit more. Now, the 107 includes taking out that lab and such at Radcliffe. So that's actually, even if we go back a page and look at those expenses of, then at Skynet Innovations, you see it dropping. That's us showing not, not exactly just the lab, but that's the lab. Then we have to, they have a two and a half percent increase on their contract as well. So we have to include that back in. But those are the devices serviced by the city or by Skynet for the city. We're looking, some, we're looking, and even in that, that, those devices assigned to the city, we're looking to cut back on those too. Something we noticed even before me, I didn't realize it's how Skynet billed, was per device. So something we're looking to do moving forward, and actually, the perfect example has happened in Fire Department last month. We had employees that had a desktop and a laptop, and we're being charged essentially double. You know, they had two devices, so we're being charged on both sides. We were able, that laptop was new enough, we were able to put a docking station instead, remove that workstation. Now they have a docking station. We're only being charged once by Skynet for that employee. And they were able to have a laptop when they come in, plug it in, have the network printers, keyboards. printers, keyboard, mouse, and their, you know, their monitors. And then when they're on the road, they can take their laptop with them. So that just actually happened in the Fire Department, so we're already starting to see some of those savings. So that's actually one of my goals for looking ahead is identifying those cost-saving areas in technology, desktop to laptops and docking stations. I also hope to the next year is complete a citywide technology inventory, hopefully sooner than later. Review the Wow and Comcast contracts that we currently have. Review the Microsoft license types for department like I was talking about before. I believe that is it, unless you have any questions.
Okay, council, anybody have any questions for Mr. King?
Of course I do.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I'm looking at the salaries and wages, and for 23 and 24, it was 69,000. So far this year, we've used 42, and we, we budgeted for about, for about 40, but for next year, we have it up to 69. But we're not adding any.
Those are two different line items. So that, that 69 number, that's me, that's the full-time salaries and wages. And then down one below that, there are projected activities 40,000, and the budget request is 50,000. So like, we've used 42,000 of my salary so far.
Right, but the line item that says so far this year for salaries and wages part-time, we've used 21. We're going to go to about 40, but we projected another 10 for part-time. So we're increasing our part-time hours by $10,000.
Yes, the ability for him to utilize that throughout the year to do events and things like that, absolutely, yeah. You know, it's overall a reduction from the 24, 25 budget of 72,800 that was anticipated. I think, you know, a lot of the reason you're seeing 40 this year is a lot of changeover and a lot of expectation changes. However, I do still want him to have a certain amount of budget to continue to cover all the events he needs to. So he took 22,000, 22,000, or 20,000.
Well, that was the expected, we didn't spend that much though.
Yeah, but I would say just because, you know, not every year is a perfect example, and I don't want to just cut him too short so that if he has a big event year and other things are requested of him, that he has some fluctuation to go up to 50. But ultimately, we cut 22,800, and we also cut a full-time position that was budgeted last year for him. So, you know, I, I think the extra 10 cushion for his part-timers, if need be, is fair and within reason.
I get it, but as a councilperson, if we get down to more Facebook posts or an extra police officer, that's all I'm saying. And then, when you talked about that Code Red, I did, I know another community that's using that, and they like it a lot better than Nixel. I know that we only have like 5,000 people that use Nixel. Code Red is going to have, they're going to do more to get more of our residents to sign up for that. Like, are we going to put it on our website? Are we going to put in the sign? We're going to put it in the water bill and all that so we can get more people?
Yeah. Code Red, there's, there's nothing that Code Red is going to do to do that, but yes, the Communications Department will do some outreach, marketing, Facebook, social media, website. We will do everything we can to reach as many people. I know previous to me starting, we did a big campaign to get people on Nixel. We only saw, I think, 400 new subscribers in that one year. We really focused hard on trying to get subscribers. So there could just be a lack of people interested. Something cool, like I said about Code Red, is they will automatically load everyone that's registered in the area with a phone number into the emergency notification side. But also something with Code Red is we can have two different groupings. When you sign up, it'll ask you, do you want emergency notifications and do you want general notifications?
Right, because I feel like most of our Nixel was, hey, there's going to be traffic from the Lucky Squirrel.
Yeah.
So there's going to be more emergency stuff available that they're going to automatically do?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
Further comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
You were mentioning regarding removing some phones. I know some businesses have done that, and they went to Teams, because you can, through Teams, have a phone number. Now granted, those are on the phone quite a bit, it's probably not the best option, but people that are on the borderline, maybe that'd be something to look into. It may increase the license, so I don't know if it's going to be worthwhile, but something worth looking into.
Yeah, that's actually something I started last week with Skynet, because they're the ones that actually manage our phones. I kind of reached out and said, hey, I'm kind of interested to explore that Teams connection. We're using Teams more, we're already paying for Teams. Is there a cost savings there? I would personally prefer that, be able to answer it on my computer instead of my desktop, but yeah, we're looking into that.
And even your cell phone, if you have Teams loaded on there, you can answer there.
Yeah, that is currently included in our phone package per license. So every employee, your phone takes up a license. You can also have that on your phone for no additional cost. So a lot of our department heads already have that today where they can answer their desk phone on their cell phone, if they so choose.
Further comments from table?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I could just, a little bit of add to.
Go ahead, Mr. Gibbons.
Zach covered communications, which, you know, he is the head of that department. However, the reason I had him cover technology is, as you could see from his presentation, very adept, and, and it's really, you should give people credit for the job they're doing. For me to have covered that under General Services would have given justice to the work he's put into it. And so even when it comes down to just a little bit of extra money for part-time, what I feel like Garden City, it's all about value. So budget isn't just numbers, it's what are we getting for the dollars we're spending? Zach, Zach is, I saw people say Garden City needs Doge, the Department of Governmental Efficiency. When it comes to technology, Zach has done that over the last five months. He identified $30,000 worth of computer expenses by, by finding out that we're charged per computer by Skynet and identifying computers that weren't used and identifying phones that weren't used. He saved us tremendous amount of money going forward, and those are year-to-year costs. It's subtle what he said about, we were on a year-long contract with Skynet, so if we had 100 devices at the beginning of the year, if we dropped them one month after the beginning of the contract, we had to pay the whole year. Zach negotiated it quarterly, so that when we drop computers, we get credit for dropping them. Because right now, we thought, well, we're not in the adding computer business, so for the next foreseeable future, we're going to be in the dropping computer business. It'd be better to be able to take advantage of those savings quickly. And so it's hard to translate those savings perfectly. I'm sure we could sit down and quantify them. But giving him the ability to have the time to do that while supporting still all his duties in communication, but also, he's really sort of our liaison to all technological services. You see that he, he's got 171 requests just for himself for Skynet to fix things, but that's because the city manager calls him and says, hey, can you, and then the fire chief or the police chief has the same problem, does the same thing. So I just want folks to understand that, one, I had him do that because you could see his expertise and the value we're getting there, but also, he could speak to it very eloquently and adjust, to understand that within this communication budget, we're getting a technological efficiency officer. You know, I, I do think every agency and business should have someone looking around, finding where, where you're wasting money. And Zach's done an excellent job of that over the last five months since I've been here. And my initial thing was just trying to get him to do, all right, I just want Communications to do Communications. Well, it turns out, we saved a lot of money by him also doing technology. So I, one, I just wanted to express that during the course of his budget, because it ties very much. The Department for Communications costs is $133,000, but I imagine technology would be a lot more if he wasn't doing the job he was doing. So credit needs to be given where credit's due.
I have no doubt of Zach's ability.
And I will say too, that is a request that can be changed. And really, where I came about the 50,000 is I'm kind of going back to what I had previously of a full-timer. So when we had, when I asked for that full-timer to be added, I slashed that part-time budget and added, added that full-timer. So the part-time budget was going to be close to nothing. So really, I just kind of flipped it back to just part-timers with no full-timer. And, and a little bit of uncertainty, just not knowing what it's going to bring. I really did think when Tim started, go back to Communications, and I'd be able to focus a lot on that. But being able to do this other stuff has actually been somewhat easy and, because it really hasn't gone through before our tech stuff. So now having someone assigned to it, handle the contractor, nothing against Skynet. When the city previously had BPI, they were a lot smaller company and serviced us as our tech department. As our transition over to Skynet, I keep telling them over and over again, you cannot, Will cannot leave our team. As I showed you, Will was on the project manager side. That's really all he helps with this, I mean, he does help with tickets, but he's really supposed to only be helping with projects, not the day-to-day tickets. He still is, and I've been very clear to Skynet that he needs to be, because he's a huge asset to this city in terms of technology, knowing the court system, Clemus, police, just, just all the knowledge, especially just Will has. Thankfully, he's documented a lot of that. So some of those new techs are able to see his documentation and be able to perform the same services. We're just not seeing, now that he's moved into a bigger role in Skynet with a lot more customers, we're not seeing him as often. We're just growing through some of those bumps. So having my department kind of take over some of those bumps and smooth them out for the employees, at least I'm seeing more of the hurdles than our employees are.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Zing, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Okay, now, last but not least, we saved the best for last. 21st District Court, we have Court Administrator, Mr. Brandon Coopy, Coopy, Croupy, sorry, and Judge Richard Hammer. Judge Hammer.
Members of council, mayor, of course, I'm the chief judge at the 21st District Court. The Court Administrator is going to be doing the presentation. For want of a better term, he is more or less the business manager of the court. I leave to him most of the bookwork. Other years, I've done the presentation, but in recent years, we have Court Administrators, because you're all fully capable, but are taking over the position of, a role of making the presentation. Of course, I'll be here for any questions, and it's my honor to be here, but at this point, I may sit down and lob Mr. Croupy to make his presentation. And of course, I wanted to come here and express my appreciation for all the assistance from the city. We are separate, but by the same token, we are funded by the city, and the court certainly does appreciate that. But I will make myself available for any inquiries or questions you might have after Mr. Croupy's made his presentation, all right?
Very good, thank you, sir.
Now, I'll stand next to him simply because that could be distracting, but I'll be sitting here.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us. Just go through, mine seems to be fairly short, hopefully. So 21st District Court, there's our court staffing. We have one judge, one court administrator, one staff member is our court recorder and judicial secretary. We have a probation director, one full-time security officer, and two part-time officers that split the week. And then we have five full-time deputy clerks. So total of 12 employees. This is our current caseload trends from 2019 to 2024. In the last three years, it seems to be trending downward. That can change. It's, questions, let me know. Take a look back at 2024. We continue to encourage the use of online resources, like court innovations, where people can resolve civil infraction tickets online, the use of Zoom for our virtual courtroom. And then MyFile is our civil cases. It's, it's a paperless, it's a paperless filing system for civil cases. So the majority of our civil cases only exist in paperless form. For, for this current budget, the 24, 25 budget, we closed, we did, we did a lot of cutting last year. We closed a vacant part-time court officer position, and we had a reduction of non-personnel expenditures of 21%. And then the court saw, started to see, we implemented a new collection program in 2023, but we started to see the success of that program in 2024. It's a tax garnishment program. And starting in 2023 resulted in, resulted in collecting just under 25,000 in outstanding monies owed that were probably going to go otherwise uncollected. And then moving ahead, our, we, our collection program will continue to grow. As of last week, we have received from our 2024 garnishments, we received just under 5,500 in payments already, and we've also received disclosures in the amount of over $32,000 in outstanding monies. And we're only in March, so we'll continue, we should continue to see more of that. And then the 21st District Court will continue to deliver justice for all by providing access, protecting rights, resolving disputes, and applying law under the Constitution. The only, for changes in requests, there's a slight in non-personnel costs, I think it's a 2.8% reduction, because we had a big one last year. But we're only, we're asking for a 2% cost of living wage increase for all court employees, which goes in line with a lot of the union contracts in the city. Other than that, just maintain status quo for the year.
The court employees aren't union?
No, we're not union, correct.
Okay, further questions from council? Okay, you got easy.
You're about AI or something.
We'll talk another time about that.
Thank you. Okay, that ends our budget review for now. We will move on to our action items. And action item number one is our professional service agreement with Plant Moran for our water rate study. Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you, mayor and council. We have not had a water rate study since 2019. That study, I believe, only went out to touch 2023. So at this time, examining our water funds and want to make sure that we're able to continue to maintain operations and set appropriate rate schedules, given our capital needs, given our costs, as councils discussed. We're constantly evaluating changes in capital needs, personnel costs, and, and able to, and need to take into consideration new rates that are being generated throughout southeast Michigan. So it's my intention right now to request council agree to allow us to approve the attached professional service agreement for such a study through Plant Moran, who's done it for us before. What I'd like to do is to be able to get at least a three- to five-year plan given to us by accountants who can tell us where we should be and then stick to that plan.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
I moved to approve the attached professional service agreement and engagement letter with Plant Moran to provide a water and sewer rate study in an amount not to exceed 16,000.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafodis. Further discussion from table?
I just have one question.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Was it last year that we raised the water rates?
I believe we have, over the past few years, simply passed on anything that Great Lakes Water Authority had put on rate and water and sewer increases, but our, our increases for our own costs, I don't believe have gone up, other than just passing through those rates.
Okay, thanks.
I think last year, that's exactly what it was, whatever they raised our rates, we passed.
Right, but it wasn't something for us, it was just because of them.
Correct.
Okay, further comments from table? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0, 5-0. Okay, item two is another professional service agreement for Plant Moran Gap Services. Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you, mayor and council. One, this is just a continuation of Plant Moran as a gap accounting service. Unfortunately, as I made council aware previously, that our treasurer, Deanne Herbie, who's been wonderful, was offered employment with another municipality at a more competitive rate and much closer to her home. Particularly, the closing of 696 for two years made it almost impossible for her to get from her side of town to our side of town and ignore the pay increase that was offered by another community, plus a two-minute drive. So we'll be, we've already posted applications for a finance director slash treasurer. We're continuing to search again, and, you know, this is going to make sure that Plant Moran can continue to provide services that assist us during that gap. That's why they call it GAP. Essentially, I think they have a general accounting, but it also does fill the gap of us having a treasurer search going on and not having one in-house. We're also examining another, just as we had, Plant Moran can provide so many services up to, but at a certain point, because they do our audit, there's some they can't. So we're, myself and Matt Miller are meeting with another GAP accounting service to provide that other piece this week. But for sure, right now, maintaining Plant Moran's GAP services is essential. We're definitely learning the time that I don't, we don't have someone in that position, you know, just, it doesn't harm us completely, but it does impede our ability to adapt to the changing financial nature that occurs day-to-day throughout any municipality and become aware and, and adapt quickly. So maintaining this good relationship with Plant Moran's essential, and then also just quickly finding a replacement is essential.
Our current treasurer's staying with us through the budget season so we can finish.
She's staying with us till Friday, but I, what I'll say is, a tremendous amount of work over the last three weeks. Once she realized that she was going to have to make this decision, that she's just been night and day to help us get through, have a set budget that's presentable, she, she got us through that budget amendment. And most, most importantly, through our audit, you know, finishing that up so that business can continue here at Garden City. So I, I told her I can't complain because, you know, her qualifications are in very, very high demand in this field. Uh, finance director, treasurers are hard to find. She came in and has provided, uh, just, and, uh, I can't even demonstrate the value because it, it was so much of just being able to get ourselves, um, in the right direction for this budget and going forward, given our, our current constraints. Um, I'm confident that, um, with the, the adjustment she's helped us and our ability to, um, utilize these accounting, gap accounting services will be okay. Um, of course, ideal, I'd love her to stay forever, but I also understand, uh, she's a person with a family and, and, um, certainly doesn't want to move to Garden City just yet. Uh, so I think she's going to be, uh, uh, you know, I, I completely understand her going and staying with the other job.
We, we know how plant, uh, road closures can go and, uh, we just had to deal with Mayorman at 696.
Yes, this is, uh, this is, this is very small, uh, our Mayorman was very small compared to the two-year closing of a, uh, major highway that is really the only way to get to that other. We all, anyone who's grown up in Detroit knows that when you go to the east side, it's like the other end of the world and 696 is the only thing that makes it tolerable. So, uh, it's completely understandable.
Okay, uh, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember, or Mayor Protemdol?
I, I motion to approve the attached professional service agreement in a, a letter with, uh, Plant Moran to provide gap accounting services.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Okay, uh, we'll move on to public comments. Uh, anybody wishing to speak on, uh, all the stuff to comment on what we just went through? Or anything else, please come forward, uh, state your name and you'll have three minutes to speak. Anybody wishing to speak from the public? Mr. Mulder?
Yeah, I, I noticed on my property tax bill that for the sanitation, you increase the fee $70, which that's okay, I understand part of that. But you also lowered the millage rate a little bit and then you took the water off, the lighting off, but I still wound up with a $35 increase after I distracted that from the $70. Should have left the lighting on at start with, that was stupid. I mean, the fee is a, they only had two good, uh, fee, two good charges on the old tax bill. That was the lighting fee and a sanitation fee. Because everything else is on millage and you all know how I feel about the millage because it's one of the most discriminating taxes in the world and everybody knows it. I know it and you all know it. The state, uh, had a lot to do with that, I'm sure, because that's an automatic increase every year, except the time when everybody's property went, except mine. I never got a, I got a $13 decrease one year and it went right back up the second year. I never got any decrease and so did a lot of other people that's been around years, probably you didn't either, but people that've been here the longest got no reduction at all. And if you'd have had this, uh, fee thing instead of property tax, you wouldn't be in the shape you're in now because you, you would have kept your money coming in. Now you lost it all on this stupid property tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Gibbons, I know you spoke, uh, a little bit tonight, but anything else?
Thank you, mayor and council, I, I've exhausted my comments, so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Protemdol?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hughes?
Ditto.
Councilmember King?
Uh, just real quick, want to thank everybody that did the presentation today. I found it very informative. I did attend the budget meetings last year and I, this year far passes, uh, last year's presentations. I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Karafodis?
I just have one thing. I'd like to give my condolences to the family of our former, uh, councilwoman Pam King, who passed away this week. We're sorry to hear about her passing.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. One, I also would like to thank everybody, all the department heads, uh, judge and the court for, uh, their presentations tonight. Uh, I thought they were awesome, uh, shed some light on some things, so thank you to all of them. Uh, also my condolences to, uh, Councilmember King. I, I was on council with her for, for a few years and she was just a wonderful, wonderful lady and a, a real good person, uh, so my condolences. This Saturday, uh, hockey benefit game, uh, challenge, our Garden City Fire, our Police Department is playing the Westland Fire Department. 7:00 PM is puck drop at Garden City Ice Arena.